I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, commencing at seven o'clock PM. I will call roll, starting with Council President Kritzler.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmembers LaHoudin.
Here.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
And thank you all for joining us this evening. Is there a council member that will move to excuse Councilmember Stewart this evening?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Councilmember Stewart. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you all very much. I'm going to take a moment, a personal privilege, to share some really exciting news that we just found out about, not even two hours ago. As many of our community knows, Senator Patty Cruder won her seat as Insurance Commissioner for the state, where we're excited about that opportunity for her. And today, King County Council worked to appoint a new senator. And so, one of our representatives, Representative Vondana Sotter is now our new state senator for the 48th, so congratulations to her. And with that, it opened up a legislative seat. And one of our council members, Councilmember LaHoudin, was one of the three people who put their name forward and had the opportunity to be appointed today. And I'm extremely excited, slightly sad, because we have to share him with Olympia. But I'm really excited to share that Councilmember LaHoudin is now Councilmember and state legislator, LaHoudin. And I wish him congratulations and very excited to have you representing the 48th and Redmond in the state legislature. Congratulations. And I don't know if you'd like to say anything. I kind of sprung this on you at this moment.
I will just say, you know, I truly love Redmond and I love the 48th LD, and I am incredibly honored to have this opportunity. I have maybe slightly longer remarks later on, but for now, I really appreciate all of you, my colleagues, my city council, my city staff, and everyone who shows up to our meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Very exciting news today. Let's see. We don't have any special orders of the day. The first item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet here for members of the public to speak tonight when I read your name. You'll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorkouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the Savior Redmond business, as indicated on the sign-in sheet. And there are two people signed up to speak tonight, and no one has signed up to speak remotely. So with that, I will call up Mr. David Morton and then Alex Zimmerman.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm David Morton. I support approving consent agenda item three, the contract with Landau Associates. The agreement appears prudent and necessary for several reasons. First, it ensures continuity of critical groundwater monitoring services, as the current contract expires December 31st, 2024. The hope is that the monitoring will detect groundwater contamination before contamination reaches Redmond's drinking water supply wells. Second, the $300,000 maximum contract value includes important safeguards. It does not authorize any spending upfront, and each task order must be funded through council-authorized projects. And third, the scope of work includes semi-annual monitoring of up to 25 wells and detailed reporting requirements. However, the scope of work includes a table of analytes and methods that says these groundwater analyses may be included on the sampling analysis plan. Comprehensive water quality testing would include all these groundwater analyses on the sampling analysis plan. The sampling analysis plan should be available for the public to see. Overall, this agreement helps protect a vital public resource. On another topic, here are five actions that Redmond can take to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. First, promote electrification of transportation. Incentivize adoption of EVs through rebates, EV-charging infrastructure investments, and EV-friendly policies. And encourage public transportation and active transportation options like walking and cycling. Second, increase energy efficiency in buildings. Develop and implement energy-efficient building codes and retrofit existing buildings, and offer incentives for residents and businesses to upgrade to energy-efficient appliances and lighting. Third, enhance green spaces and urban forestry. Expand tree planting initiatives and green space preservation. And implement green infrastructure to manage stormwater runoff and reduce urban heat island effects. Fourth, foster a sustainable food system. Support local community gardens, urban agriculture initiatives, and farmers' markets. And encourage food waste reduction and composting programs. Finally, update the environmental sustainability action plan. Engage residents, businesses, and community organizations in developing a comprehensive climate action plan. And set clear emissions reduction targets and track progress through regular reporting and monitoring. Let's work together to create a sustainable, resilient, and thriving community for generations to come. Thank you.
Next, we have Alex Zimmerman.
The child, my dirty damn Nazi, you stop a fascist bandito. Yeah. Sorry, my name Alex Zimmerman, and I'm president of Stand Up America and support Trump from 15 for 10 years, from beginning, in every my statement, but as I go for election for the last 10 years. We win. It's okay. It's exactly what is needed.
Point of order?
Yes.
New American revolution.
The speaker is discussing elections.
Mr. Zimmerman, you have a lot of opportunity to, you need to speak on items from Redmond City business, and you may not speak on elections, and this is your only warning.
I don't talk about elections. I talk to my people. But right now, I'm being example. Internet right now talking about so Democrat not accept different opinion, acting like a mob, like a criminal, like bandit. And I give you classic example. Mayor, what does we have? She's a member of Sound Transit Board. So they give me three trespass before, so I cannot ever come inside. It's okay, no problem. I have 100 trespasses. Yeah. Five times prosecute, more than Trump. But in August, they give me something what is very different. This is exactly what they want to speak. It's very important, absolutely critical. So they give me trespass for one year, so I can come, can sit, can listen, can make a right complaint, but I cannot speak. Guys, you understand about talking? So I can present, but I cannot speak. This apart what is very important, because this bandito, this Nazi pig, a fascist, you know what it means, go deeper and deeper, and she's a part of this. Yes, exactly. And I try complain about this, they not accept complaint. It's very interesting. So I can present, but I cannot speak. You see this before? You have a constitution? For who? For Democrat? No, we don't have constitution for Democrat. It's a nightmare. I go to Bellevue today, I come from Bellevue today, speak about Bellevue Police, who prosecute me five times.
Point of order?
Yes, council member.
The speaker has moved off the topic of the city of Redmond.
You see this? It's exactly what is it?
Mr. Zimmerman, you have lost the remainder of your time. Thank you.
Is this exactly what? Right now, they not accept different opinion. It's a mob.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled on the consent agenda? Seeing none, this will be a voice vote, because we're all here in person. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the consent agenda? Say nay. Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. Our next item on our agenda is a staff report. Should make sure I didn't need to read anything in the record. I did not. Excellent. Is a staff report on the Safer Streets Action Plan status update. Seraphie Allen, Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, council. As mentioned, tonight, staff will provide a status update on the progress of Redmond's Safer Streets Action Plan. The Safer Streets Action Plan identifies strategies to proactively improve safety of Redmond's transportation system and position the city to apply for federal grants and state safety grants. Before I turn over to staff, I first want to acknowledge that you have received and adopted a lot of transportation plans in 2024, such as the Local Road Safety Plan and the transportation element within Redmond 2050, and that we are really intentional as staff about how these plans all talk together and making sure that the development of this plan has been integrated with some of those plans that have already previously been adopted by the council. With that said, I also want to say that staff, I've asked staff tonight to focus on the substance of the plan, and that we still have quite a bit of work to do before it's a final product. And we look forward to taking in your feedback about that. Lastly, I would like to appreciate the Police Department and specifically Deputy Chief Coats for partnering with us, and he'll be noting any questions that may arise as it relates to the development of the Automated Traffic Camera Enforcement Program. And so with that, staff that present tonight include Transportation Planning Manager, Michael Hints, and Senior Transportation Planner, Francesca Liberty. And I'll turn it over to Michael to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Deputy Director Allen, and thank you, mayor and council. Tonight, we want to provide just an overview of the draft Safer Streets Action Plan, how this plan will contribute to Redmond's transportation vision. We also review the safety target that is within the plan and provide detail about the strategies in the draft plan. This draft plan was developed with input from planning, police, fire, public works, and parks. Representatives from each of these departments were present at two task force meetings that were convened for the purpose of discussing draft strategies and building departmental support and buy-in. Tonight, we'll take questions from the council and look forward to addressing your questions and digging deeper into the strategies at our January 28th study session. So just wanted to remind council on this safe system approach. The draft plan is really centered on this approach, which is endorsed by the U.S. Department of Transportation and is really the framework for the national roadway safety strategy. You can read on the slide the key principles of the safe systems approach. I do want to note that we are adding a sixth pillar that is a little different from FHWA's, that's the Federal Highway Administration's wheel, and that is land use. We added that because it is, one, it's just a very important component for road safety. We want to put land uses close to where people are, so we reduce exposure. So we added this because it's consistent with Washdott's Target Zero Plan that just came out a couple months ago, as well as King County's Road Safety Plan. Next slide. Want to move on and talk about the safety target that we're including in the plan. This is a requirement of the Safe Streets for All program from USDOT. We need to identify a reduction target and a date by which we will meet that target. Going back to the task force meetings that we held earlier, in the summer and fall of 2024, we had discussions around what is a reasonable target, understanding that also we want to be aspirational. We really want to push the city to achieve this target. So the draft target is shown in bold here, and that is to reduce fatal and severe injury crashes by 50% by 2030 and achieve zero fatal and severe injuries, injury crashes by 2035. I will say that Redmond already has a low number of fatal and severe injury crashes, fortunate in that way. But at the same time, through our transportation and land use planning, Redmond 2050, we really are moving towards a multimodal transportation system and inviting more people to walk, bike, and take transit. So though our current FSI crash numbers are low, we want to take a proactive approach to keep them low and get to zero. Next slide.
So I will start kind of delving into our strategies and policy updates that we'll be providing in our draft plan. The first of these is some updates to our City Traffic Signal Manual that was last updated in 2002, so it's a bit dated. So we want to incorporate current practices that are not yet actually in this manual, as well as adding some recommendations that will help make Redmond signals safer for pedestrians and drivers. So some of these recommendations include pedestrian scrambles. These allow pedestrians their own phase to walk in all directions at signalized locations with high non-motorized activity. This could also include leading pedestrian interval, or LPI. This interval gives pedestrians a head start at crossing at crosswalks and helps make them more noticeable to drivers as they're crossing the street. Then finally, another recommendation would include some no right turn on red signage. These would be applied in locations and at times of day where appropriate, and these reduce pedestrian vehicle conflicts, especially for right-turning vehicles. All right. Next, we'll talk to our speed limit policy, and this relates to our Speed Safety Camera Program. Based on what we know of the relationship between speed and crash risk and severity, the city wants to focus on reducing speeds on arterials. First, we want to conduct a speed study, so we can understand where we can simply change signs and expect people to drive at or near the posted speed with a sign change only, versus the streets where changes to the design or operation of that street would be necessary to achieve the target speed. So the city could consider doing this without any sort of engineering study, is reducing the speed limit on local streets to 20 miles an hour. And Tacoma and Seattle have done this as well to show success. We'd also propose speed safety cameras to focus on reducing vehicle speeds in areas with vulnerable users, specifically school zones and near parks, and this would be done through an equitable approach. We're coordinating with the Police Department and Communications Staff for the proposed Speed Safety Camera Program, which is anticipated to be in place for the 2025 through 26 school year. And then we'll have more information on this at our January 28th study session as well. And as we've mentioned previously, it will be important to take an equitable approach with the Speed Safety Camera Program. We'd provide a warning system for first offenses, allow for fine reduction if there was demonstrated hardship, and make sure that there would be alternative methods to fine, such as education and other opportunities. And we want to be clear that the revenue from the Speed Safety Camera Program would go back towards making roadway safer and would go back into our roadway safety improvement programs. All right. And then I'll also speak to our pedestrian priority zones. Redmond currently has three defined pedestrian zones. These are shown in our Transportation Master Plan from 2013. And right now, the zone in downtown Redmond is the only one that's currently signed. The top photo here shows the bridge right outside City Hall here on Northeast 85th Street, and you can see as you're crossing the bridge, a sign that says you're entering a pedestrian zone. So these are areas where pedestrian activity is higher or expected to be higher, where mixed-use or transit-oriented development continues to occur and is occurring right now. And what we want to do with the Safety Action Plan is take this opportunity to better define what these zones are and how streets should be designed and operated to maximize pedestrian safety within these zones. For example, we would reduce street widths, reduce speeds, remove pedestrian push buttons, and promote raised crossings and raised intersections, as well as having adaptive signals. All of these things are measures we could take to promote pedestrian safety and prioritize pedestrian access in these areas. And then, education and enforcement may also have a role in defining these areas. So we'll want to note that as we continue to look into more detail here. And I'll pass it back to Michael here for the next few slides.
Another strategy that we've identified in the plan is focused on complete streets. The city has a complete streets policy, and we want to be sure that we are not missing any opportunities to implement that complete streets policy. So it's really about reinforcing the policy and ensuring that it's being implemented through capital projects, private development, certain maintenance projects, and other opportunities. And so we're looking at, are there policies we have in place and the processes we have in place, are they adequate? What may need to change to get better outcomes? And specifically exploring the adoption of a complete streets checklist that would be used in all project development. So we're sure to make sure that complete street elements are considered in every project. This also really builds upon and adjusts the processes that the city's already doing to institutionalize safety practices and supports other planning efforts in the TMP, and that's the Transportation Master Plan, and the Environmental Sustainability Plan that's focused on reducing vehicle miles traveled. And then, a key part of this is really evolving our street standards, and as well as we've been working closely with the Fire Department, particularly on the Transportation Master Plan, to really understand what it takes to evolve not only our street standards, but also if there's opportunities to evolve emergency response practices compatible with complete The action plan also includes strategies for the city to leverage and expand upon the work that staff is doing with the School Pool Program. This is a King County program that Redmond participates in, focused on encouraging more kids to walk and bike to school. So we really want to leverage that program from a safety point of view. We want to bring bicycle and pedestrian safety into elementary and middle schools in Redmond. This is a program that was funded by the state legislature in the Move Ahead Washington, and it's already been implemented in about a dozen cities across the state. And so we definitely want to get in the queue to get that into schools in Redmond. And then, of course, investing in safe and comfortable infrastructure that really allows parents to feel comfortable to allow their kids to walk and bike to school. Rapid implementation, we talked a bit about this when presenting the Transportation Master Plan Bicycle Strategy. This is a strategy that we really want to double down on, and so that we can quickly implement projects with lower-cost materials and evaluate the effectiveness of those projects. And assuming they are effective, you know, move forward with steps to make those improvements permanent. This is a strategy that a lot of cities have found success with, and in fact, we will be coming to you with some ideas on grant application for the Safe Streets for All program that's focused on demonstration activities. And a lot of those could include these rapid implementation projects. Back to you, Francesca.
All right. So next, we'll talk about our community engagement campaign. So this safety, safety community engagement campaign will require a partnership between the city's actions, community-based organizations, employers, and the traveling public. This campaign really is going to focus on all road users' shared responsibility and promoting a safety culture while addressing known risk factors such as distraction, impairment, and speeding. Our tagline, our slogan here for our program is "Building a Safer Redmond Together," and we're working with our Communications Department on messaging and getting this concept out. So safety culture is defined as the values and beliefs shared among groups of road users and stakeholders that influence their decisions to behave or act in ways that will affect traffic safety. So this equally applies to staff as we're planning traffic safety projects, designing and constructing roadways, maintaining road infrastructure, as well as responding to emergencies as first responders, and then as well as road users, just the traveling public. So we're all part of this solution, and this campaign is really about working together, coming from all different avenues within the Redmond community. All right. And then, also in our Safety Action Plan, we are discussing how we're going to evaluate our success with this plan and keep staff held accountable as we move forward to implement some of these projects. So one of these ways is with a post-crash response team. So this would include a small team of first responders, planners, and engineers who would dive deeper into the details of each fatal and serious injury crash to develop ways to improve safety in the future. And this is really how we're working towards those zero fatal and serious injury crashes in the future. So this team would document contributing factors of these FSI crashes from an engineering and planning perspective, as well as from a first responder perspective, and then identify solutions to prevent future crashes, while in turn, working in tandem with the proactive programs and solutions we've already discussed here that are in the action plan. Next, we'd also continue our Safer Streets Task Force. This would be a continuation of the staff group that's met twice now, that's included members from all departments. And we could potentially expand this to include community members. This would meet one to two times a year and would share progress and promote accountability as we work to implement the action plan. And this would also help advocate for that safety culture that we're talking about with the Community Engagement Plan. And then finally, we'd use ongoing data analysis and evaluation to, you know, measure our successes and see how we're keeping ourselves accountable with this plan. This would ensure that our crash reporting is adequately capturing factors that are contributing to vulnerable road user-involved crashes. We want to expand our data collection to get a more complete picture of crash factors and risks. This would be with our traffic cameras, with additional data from first responders or hospitals, and also with pedestrian and bicycle counts. And then finally, we'd use this data to help us evaluate and monitor the progress of our improvement programs and initiatives. So we could include an online dashboard, an annual reporting. These are all ways that we would work to track our progress with this action plan. And I'll pass back to Michael.
Last pass. The action plan also talks about some emerging topics and technologies. Among them, upgrading cities' fleet vehicles with intelligent safety features. Intelligent speed assistance is a technology that's widely used in Europe and is being used among many fleets across the U.S. as well. That basically just gives active warnings to the operator when they're exceeding the speed limit. Smart Signs is a strategy that is being piloted currently by King and Pierce Counties, and these are infrared, they have infrared technology, and they can detect if a driver is using a cellphone, if they're wearing their seatbelt, and other things. So pretty exciting technology. We're going to wait and see how it plays out in the pilot in King County. And yeah, so with that, those are kind of the main strategies of the draft action plan that we wanted to present to you tonight. I know you have questions, and we will be happy to take those questions and answer and dig deeper during our study session on the 28th of January. So we are coming to you in a couple weeks, and then we'll be seeking approval for the plan adoption in the March-April timeframe, and also coming to you for approval to apply for Safe Streets for All funding in the May or summer timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. Are there any questions from council to prep for the study session coming up? Council Vice President.
Thank you. I think you were talking about the...
I think you were talking about the study session on the 21st, yes?
28th.
28th, okay, thank you. I heard a couple of dates, so I wanted to verify, 28th. So, on the 28th, I would love to hear more about the land use pillar that you briefly touched on, and what all that means as far as what we're looking at, how we can be using that information to have more protected streets. And then, I'm really also interested in having a council member liaise on that crash response team. Just think it would be really interesting for us to get, since this is a topic of a lot of passion for the majority of us council members, I think it would be nice that if we had some representation, just sitting in on those conversations, just to hear how that goes. I will defer to what my fellow colleagues think on that idea. Also interested in hearing more about the camera policy work. I've been very clear about being in favor of that in schools zones, but not elsewhere. So, just want to dig in more on that policy. I also noticed in some of the pictures in your slideshow that the bike lane was being used as a parking lane for some of our city vehicles. So I would like to see a policy where we do not allow that, especially from our city vehicles. And I'm sure I will have more to add on the 28th. Thank you.
Yeah, that image is a little confusing because that was when it was actually being installed, so those are...
Gotcha. I've seen it in other instances too.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely want to have that as part of our conversation. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I was just curious, I noticed when you were giving the presentation that you mentioned the word "first responders," and I just wanted to clarify what you meant by that.
Yeah, first responders would include fire department and police department.
In the context of this plan, or also Public Works as well?
Yeah, generally, that term is used to encompass fire, EMS, and police.
But not Public Works?
They're responding to emergencies that happen, like traffic crashes.
Understood.
Public Works does not respond directly to emergencies.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Slahudin.
Thank you. My question, not necessarily related to Councilmember Anderson's, but was along the same lines of seeing with the reduction of fatal and severe injury crashes by 50% by 2030 and zero by 2035, in thinking about the work that Public Works would do, does that take into account potential natural disasters that, you know, our city recently has gone through that may have caused, you know, unsafe roadways and things of that nature where, you know, that's calculated and factored into these numbers?
Yeah. We can get back to you on that. I mean, generally, the target is focused on traffic-related injuries.
Got it. Perfect. And then, I want to echo what Council Vice President Forsyth mentioned regarding the speed cameras, and would love to get a deeper dive into the equitable portion. You were mentioning, you know, how many opportunities people might get to receive warnings, or when they might have fee reductions. So, a little bit more information. I know our police chief and deputy chief have provided some good information there. And finally, just want to give a kudos to the school coordination and the school pool program, if there's any ways that, not necessarily a question, but opportunities for our city to promote and advocate that more, would love to do that.
Excellent, thank you.
And just as a reminder, that study session, Safe Streets For All Study Session, is followed by police and the traffic cameras, so, school zone cameras. So that will be all encompassed in one night. Council President, and then Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, and one follow-up question on that. I assume we'll be able to do a prep and committee or something on that automated speed enforcement cameras item, so, any other questions council members want to send in on that one, we'll have another touch. I see the mayor nodding, so that's great, since I think there is a lot of interest and good. We'll dedicate some time to talk about that in particular. I think for this, I'm also, I'm very interested, especially with the city traffic signal manual updates, that those kind of options to understand a little more around projected timeline for each and, you know, type of lift in terms of what are things that we might implement in the nearer term versus the farther out. I know some things we budgeted for and some things we might need to budget for, so getting a sense of that, I think, could be great. In particular, I'm very interested in understanding the scope of the right turn on red changes that would happen, and some of the planning that we might do, because that would be a big change. I know I saw a sign somewhere in Redmond that was a no right turn on red that I hadn't seen before recently, and I had to stop myself from turning. So, that seems like it's an important, just communications discussion for us, and I'd love to hear a little more of your philosophy of how we kind of implement that culture change, really, if we were to think about it. And I know some other cities, like even Seattle, have been doing that. And then, the other thing that I was going to, that I'd be interested in as we think about the school pool, is that I think last year, we heard from the Sustainability Youth ambassadors about some efforts they did on kind of supporting school pool or similar types of efforts. So, it would just be great to hear about any ways that we might be able to connect with those energetic students to gather momentum, and also perhaps on some of these things where we are going to try to affect change, especially around schools, knowing that we're later this year going to have an opportunity to have a joint meeting with the school board to potentially prepare some talking points we could share with them about ways that we could partner together. So just a couple thoughts on some ideas that we might discuss at the study session. Thank you.
Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. So, three things, having been in Redmond since a long time, having been riding a bike in Redmond and commuting to work for a long time. This is amazing to me. This is transformative. This takes a Redmond that didn't quite understand bike safety, walking safety, other types of safety, other than being in a very protected car. So, I'm real excited about much of what you've, well, all of what you've put into this plan. So this is transformative, and the aspects of, you know, messaging that we are all in this, safety together, is really important. So, thank you. What I want to add is, we talked about this at one of the meetings, where the potential of something like a youth study, an example of how people are being invited to actually commute by bicycle, or commute by walking, or commute in different ways, and, you know, sort of champion those stories. And I don't recall where or when we talked about that, but it seems to me, especially as you go to the schools, if we can find ways to communicate the life-changing, the life changes in people in our community, the residents, the health benefits, the economic benefits, just the thrill of being able to get around without trying to find a parking space, those kinds of stories, those kinds of things, actually help invite other people to ride and be mobile in these ways. So, I don't know if you can build that into your education program, starting with the schools, or starting with senior center, or starting with all kinds of different things. But I would really like to see some thoughtfulness or planning about youth studies or examples of how residents can now change their lives. So, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you, Mayor. Francesca and Michael, thank you very much for coming and presenting. The presentation was great and very informative. I deeply appreciate the sixth pillar that you added in with the land use, especially as we continue to grow, and we want people to be accessing these wonderful things that we do have, so thank you for putting that in. Two things that I'm very interested in is in decreasing down to 20 miles per hour, as some of our neighboring cities have done, learning more about how that has been enforced, and as we're already dealing with limited, other than cameras, because this council is already very concerned about our policy around cameras. So, other than cameras, how else we can handle enforcement and working with our police, because we're already dealing with staffing, to make sure that this is going to be enforceable, because of course, it's only going to be as good as it is enforceable without causing anything, you know, any further burden. And then also, I'm interested in, and I understand that we're waiting to watch in regards to smart signs in King County, watching that pilot, very interested in how we would, how we could possibly make that work in Redmond. Questions around, of course, very similar to cameras. If, are they collecting data? I would assume that they are. And what are we doing with that data? Oh, and one other quick thing was around the demonstrated hardships, going back to that 20 miles an hour. How exactly are we looking to have that hardship demonstrated? And is it going to be specific to Redmond? Because what, you know, different thresholds in other areas may not be applicable here in Redmond. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for study session, or questions? Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate all your work on this, and looking forward to the study session on January 28th. I got that right. All right. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next item of business is ombuds reports. We have the month of December is Councilmember Stewart, who is unavailable this evening, and Councilmember Fields is the month of January. Councilmember Fields, are you ready for this tonight?
Yeah, fortunately for me, even though I had forgot that I was ombuds until Council Vice President reminded me. But I was able to catch up pretty quickly, because there were only two significant emails, and one is, both of them, I'm sorry, one of them have been pretty much handled. It was, again, the student parking in neighborhoods, high school students parking. There was an exchange between a concerned resident and our law enforcement. It seems to, again, have reminded law enforcement that they had committed to patrolling that neighborhood and trying to unlock a longtime problem. The other issue is construction after 7:00 P.M. heard near 164th and 80th. A lot of construction sound, I think the time was 7:45, but the person who wrote in was not clear whether it was immediate construction in that area, or it was just being carried from other locations, and I will follow up on that one. And that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any other ombuds items for this evening? Council President.
Yeah, thank you. I, during the council recess, responded to several emails from community members that were quite alarmed to see some significantly anti-Semitic flyering that was going on around Redmond, and flagged that for Public Works, as well as got the information to them on how to submit through the Redmond portal when there was hateful flyering going on around our city. And just want to note on the record that that type of rhetoric is not welcome here. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate the community members reaching out promptly to us, and I appreciate the Public Works staff for taking care of that immediately, so, thank you. Any other ombuds items? Is that Council Vice President?
Thank you. I had some conversations with some folks around storm preparedness, emergency response post the last storm, bike safety, a lot of conversations around what happened during our budget process. And then, today, the mayor and a few staff members and I were lucky enough to go to Amazon and hear from them about Project Kuiper.
Great, thank you. Any other items for this evening? Seeing none, the next are committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Council President.
I attended my last King Conservation District Advisory Committee meeting. I'm going to be cycling off of that this upcoming year, but there's some great other SCA city leaders that'll be joining into there. And we had just a great report out on the amazing work that they've been doing. Also, got to follow up on some of the work that will be happening around, now that they've approved the new ILA, and got to see some of their budget for the upcoming year, and then also discuss some of the legislative priorities that the Conservation District will be focusing on, along with other conservation districts across the state, that I think align really well with Redmond's priorities, so hopefully we can support those as well. And also, we'll note that they, as usual, are going to be having elections coming up. But as I noted, this year, they did do a redistricting. So, in the past, they had had at-large elections every year, but this year will be the first of the new districts, and the first district is going to be in the South District, which doesn't include Redmond. So, Redmond residents will not be voting at this time on King Conservation District, but next year, at this same time, unless state legislation changes to get them on the regular ballot, then we will see our new district getting voted on, and I'll make sure, even if I'm not on the advisory committee, to get the word out, so if people want to apply. I know in this new South District, in the end, only one person actually applied for that election spot. So, it will be interesting to see how that all works going forward, but some efforts at democracy. And then the other thing that I wanted to note, I also attended the East Side Transportation Partnerships meeting in December, and one thing that I just wanted to flag for the council that we had a presentation on was a significant I-5 roadwork that is going to be coming up in '25, '26, and 2027, for nine months, where they're going to be doing double lane work zones, and at some point, the north connection from 520 is going to be cut off on the weekend, so, every weekend, for a while. So, not to alarm anyone, but I do think we'll want to monitor this and definitely let some folks know about, make sure that we're letting our residents know about some of these upcoming things and coordinating well with WashDOT on this project. I just think it's going to be a significant one for everyone on the east side, in addition to everyone across the region. So, it was very interesting to hear about it, and I think ETP, they said they'd come back to us also, so we could give some input about just how they might message on it and get the word out to the public. And last, I'll note that I also attended the North Cities Caucus for the Sound Cities Association, and myself and Mayor Nigel Herbig were voted in to join the Sound Cities Association Board. So, yeah, so excited for that. Other representatives from the North Caucus in the Sound Cities Association Board, Amy Falcone was voted in for a second term on the board, and then the other one whose seat wasn't up is Mayor Mason Thompson from Bothell. So, and then, there's other members of the board as well. But I'll look forward to joining those board meetings monthly and giving you all some updates on that, so you get even longer regional committee updates for me. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And congratulations, having served as SCA Board President and been on the board. I hope you really enjoy it, and it'll be great to have Redmond representation again. So, thank you. And the revive I-5 is a thing. So, as Council President mentioned, more to come on that. We'll make sure that we have our messaging out to our community as well, to be aware of some of the pretty significant impacts that will happen as they do that work. That's much needed. That's part of ensuring that sound transit, the light rail gets up and running in a timely fashion as well, to help with some of those pressures that we have. So, thank you. Any other committee reports? Any items for the good of the order? Anyone? All right. Oh, yes, Council President.
I just wanted to note for council members, because I sent an email yesterday with a series of dates, that I stated the time incorrectly for our new electric fire engine unveiling, which is going to be on February 1st at 1:00 P.M. So, I'm super excited about that and about our city's investments in that. Also, I just learned today that we have confirmed with the Lake Washington School District School Board that we can meet with them on March 3rd, and we'll be meeting them at the school district's meeting space. So, Deidra has sent out some information on that. And then finally, just want to plug in this meeting, and I'll plug again at our next meetings, that we do have council conversations, our town hall coming up later this month at the Redmond Senior and Community Center on Thursday, January 23rd at 5:30. Thanks.
Thank you. And as also a note, we were going to have a legislative kickoff this Friday, but unfortunately, due to a conflict with a memorial service for our transit operator that was murdered on the job, which is happening at the same time we- murdered on the job, which is happening at the same time, we decided to cancel it so our legislators and others can attend that without conflict. So, and because of the legislative session starting on Monday, we did not have time to rebook that. So we'll be meeting them in Olympia instead, as we were going to anyway. Anything else? Any other items for the good of the order? Seeing none, that concludes our business items for this meeting. If there is no objection, we are adjourned.